Let's pray. Most kind, gracious Father, Lord, we come to you once again, and God, we thank you for the rain. Lord, we just pray that you'll be with this body of commissioners as they get ready to take care of the business at hand, and Lord, as always, be with our nation. God, continue to bless Polk County as only you can. And, Lord, as always, we pray you'll be with our little buddy, Landon. In your Son, Jesus Christ's name, I pray. Amen.
You want to say please?
Please. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Keith Parker.
Here.
Shane Bowman.
Here.
Greg Brooks.
Here.
Danny Carver.
Here.
Debbie Davis.
Here.
Mosh Davis.
Here.
Kristy Harden.
Here.
Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Pipenger.
Yes.
Samantha Trump. Yes. The approval of the reports of the offices. Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call. Keith Parker.
Yes.
Shane Bowman.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carver.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Mosh Davis.
Yes.
Kristy Harden.
Yes.
Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Pipenger.
Yes.
Samantha Trump.
Yes.
All right, we have two notaries. The first one is Margaret Gregory, and then a Griffin Miles. Do I have a motion to approve on those?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call. Keith Parker.
Yes.
Shane Bowman.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carver.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Mosh Davis.
Here.
Kristy Harden.
Yes.
Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Pipenger.
Yes.
Samantha Trump.
Yes.
All right, do anybody have any budget amendments that we didn't get? All right. The budget amendment for the Polk County School Board? We don't have any. All right, Commissioner Brooks, Community Center.
It's just sort of an update, see what's going on. I think there's a bunch of, or a few more complaining. I think they've been missing informed once again, but Keith smacked so much, he said, calm down, eh? I haven't heard anything about it.
Well, I've had some complaints from people saying that we only met there once every other month, but that's not true. In June, we met there three times. There was two commission meetings, our regular and special call. We had a budget committee meeting, we had a building committee meeting.
Yeah, one or two budget meetings.
So, we had four meetings there in June. So, that's the part about us meeting there once every other month is not true. Because a lot of times we meet there with building committees and other committees, and there's other groups besides the county commissions that meet there. So, I just wanted to address that, because that's the complaint I had recently.
Well, I was told once again, and it ain't true, but the mills on wheels was in jeopardy again, because we moved rooms around, which is far less than truth than it may be, of course, well, everyone won't believe anything they're told, rightly so. And, I didn't know, you say one call?
Yeah, there goes the sound.
Yes, Matty got cussed out for one.
Robbie did too, come in and say that.
Same one. He got me, then he got Samantha.
Well, he called me, and I sent Tampa, Florida on a caller ID, and I didn't call back. Was Tampa, Florida number?
Yeah.
I knew better. But, I mean, nothing's changed, and everything's running just right along with it. I don't see what the issue is. Got a tag office there now, mills on wheels clicking right along, commission's got our side to have a meeting on. I don't see what's left to complain about, that's it.
Well, the information that got back to me was the only thing that had to be locked up was the client files.
Yeah.
We never did get to finish our meetings with the director up there, because she said everything was fine, and we'd work it out.
We need to figure out how we can open a bigger space up, because we can't keep packing in that side.
For the commission?
Yeah.
Yeah. I went through, take it.
And it's been chained on.
Can you have somebody take it chained off, Robbie?
Do I?
Can you have somebody take it chained off?
Depends what you want.
I mean, we just need to be able to open up a bigger space if we have a lot of people. We're not trying to.
It's not as wide as these three tables right here, right there.
I mean, we wouldn't necessarily need it on the budget committee or, you know, building grounds, but.
Or even if there's not many people at the commission meeting.
Right.
But when there's a lot, I mean, they deserve to have a place to sit down.
Now, the motion that we made was to move the commission over to the other side. Is that what's still being done?
No.
Did you kind of lose them here?
They, uh.
What's been changed?
Oh, that's why they're cussed out, because it's the same size, I was told. So, we just need to make sure we have enough space for everybody.
I thought those things opened up for a meeting.
Yeah, I thought those were.
They could, although it's a little bit closed back. Keep it closed, except for when the commission has a meeting. I mean, what's wrong with opening it up and giving more room? Maybe Robbie can cut that lock, put his unlock on it, and unlock before the meeting, and then lock it back when we leave.
I think she put those, um.
Zip ties.
No, she put the, um.
Put bicycle chain on it.
There was zig ties, now there's.
Bicycle lock.
Put her treadmill on that side, so we couldn't open it. So, it just needs to be changed around, so we can at least have room.
Not in thirds, is it?
Is it not two-thirds on that side over there?
It's half.
Yeah, at least. Is it half and half?
It's half.
Well, it sounds like the bicycle chain needs to be put on the filing cabinet.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
I mean, if that's the only thing that's got to be locked up, put it on the filing cabinet, let the damn thing go on.
Only back cabinet.
If you count, well, if you count the stage.
Yeah.
You count the stage, you're a bigger hurry on that side.
Was anybody told Robbie cut the lock and put his unlock on it?
Nope.
Probably.
Do we need to vote on it?
No, if anybody told.
I think we did last time.
Okay.
It was a party.
Cut the lock, and when we leave it nice, you just lock it back.
So, just to address, because I heard some different stuff, so if you remember, it's like Keith said, when we all started this, and then it was told that it was all worked out.
Yeah.
And then, we all walked in on what we walked in on, but getting all that stuff moved. And I'd like to be sure, Glenn, if you don't care, to give credit, but the boys and girls from the basin that came over and helped move all the heavy equipment, or the freezers, moved all that stuff over because they really couldn't. But now that they're out of school, it's been an issue trying to get it all moved back over onto the other side, the freezers and the things of that nature.
I thought she was putting the freezer back there where Jackie's old office was.
That's what I thought as well, but everything, but like Keith said, whenever we want to have another meeting, and we got told by Chris Grant, who's a triple A.D. coordinator.
Yeah.
And she said that she had surgery, but she was coming back, and we all got told that everything was good, it was all worked out.
Well, that's what needed to be locked up, was the mills on wheels, and that's why we were going to put it in her old office, because there was furniture in it.
And the computers and those things.
But there's, those are laptops, so she could put those in.
Correct. Like I said, but, you know, when we, as we were doing that, then it was told, everything's good, it's worked out, we didn't need to have these others, and then we all walked into what we walked into.
Last time I remember, with that building committee meeting, she was going to come to our meeting before our commission meeting. She informed somebody that she agreed to everything, everything was good, she wouldn't be at the meeting, and.
That was with Chris Grant, with the lady. Yes, sir.
And that's who said, I don't think, need to be locked up, was the files and.
It's the files and the equipment that was purchased through the grant funding for the community center.
Which is the laptop computer.
Yes, sir.
And she even said they come with packs to put them down in, like, just take them and put them up, yeah.
We'll just cut the lock, put the county lock on it, we'll use it for the meeting, lock it back, so they can have it.
Can we just make sure that mills on wheels goes in the office where we chose it? Because it needs to be locked up, I mean.
And I think the biggest reason, so like the mills on wheels, what happens on the east side of the county versus the west side? The west side is getting hot and cold mills. The east side only gets the cold mills, and then there's enough through the week that each person that comes in gets. And so, it's more of the freezer that they have to be able to store those mills, and then whenever people come and get them. And the reason why they like to do them in the front is because whenever the people come, it's a shorter distance for them to travel, just by taking them straight back out the door. But a lot of times, the people are already there, you know, waiting on them, once they do arrive from the west side to the east side. So, that, I know that was one of the concerns, as far as trucking them all the way down and then back in. That was how they liked them being as close to the front as they could get them.
Everybody agrees the lock's coming off, all right. Next.
The commissioners listed, if you get any more complaints, give them Robbie's cell phone.
Or you could just get Greg's cell phone number.
He don't answer it, so he might.
Yeah, he won't answer, doesn't matter, right?
Mine's in the paper.
All right, Commissioner Pipenger. County Baptist Association.
I'd like to turn with the Baptist Association issues the building over to the buildings and grounds committee, and have them meet with the Baptist Association on the purchase of that building, and see if they can come to a reasonable price and get that took care of. Right now, they're not, the Baptist Association is not acting as Baptist Association in the building, which is in the clause on the revert. Also, the county has not purchased it back, and it depends on which way you look at that agreement, at cost of what they put into the building, or at current fair market value. We always said it was, well, through the years, it was said that that money should go back at the cost that they put into it, to build the building. That's not the current interpretation. I'd like to turn over to the buildings and grounds, see if we can get something done on that, get that cleared out.
I'll get everybody, say one meeting first, maybe next week sometime.
That's all I've got on that.
All right. What about the sanitation employee safety equipment?
I've talked to Commissioner Carver, he's chair of that sanitation committee. I've made a call to C T A S, they have a person that does sanitation sites to get some information. She has not provided the information back yet, as far as the safety equipment and the county's due diligence to provide it. So, I'd like to put that on next month's meeting, if that's all right with you.
Commissioner Pipenger, county work location designations.
He must be a drunk.
What'd he say?
You must have pitched a good drunk, you were busy.
That's right.
He left that night, Brooks, I don't know. Anyway, the small courtroom slash Veterans Affairs Office, this isn't working, isn't working for the beer board? That's kind of odd, ain't it? It's not working for the beer board, it's apparently not working for the county when we have executive sessions, and it's not working for any other group that has to meet when there's two groups meeting up there. The beer board had its meeting outside the other day, nice little rain, it was good, cool. Luckily, wasn't a lot of paperwork to get wet. The last time we had it was the same time as I D B had a meeting in here, and we had it downstairs. Well, that was great, wasn't a problem. When I D B let out, you couldn't hear a thing in the beer board meeting. I still have that meeting recorded, you can't hear. So.
When we made over at the Baptist Association, we bounced over here and made the ham and tried to.
Well, let me finish on this, let me finish on this, and Brooks, because this has already come up in front of the commission twice. It's not been approved by the commission to move the VA office to the third floor. I'd like to recommend the commission set that location to the second floor in the old property assessors office, the secondary office beside the trustees office. Now, we can wait another month, that's fine, but.
Well, I'd like to wait one meeting with you. You're on the buildings and grounds committee meeting, ain't you?
Who, me?
Yeah.
No.
Well, you can come too, since you've got the executive thing. And we made over at the Baptist Association.
Yep.
We bounced over here and let's look at it, see if we can come up with some kind of compromise or look at something.
Well, is anybody on this commission wanting to do what we did last time on executive session? That's the only room that you can go across.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, you can.
Yeah, we can't do what we done before, that's all I've, I mean, that's just my input in it. We was in a closet.
That's why I think for the meeting.
Absolutely, stockroom.
We work something out.
We got to find some, some kind of solution.
I think, did you say meet with him? He's got a meeting, same meeting there now.
Okay, well, I mean, I don't, I don't exactly understand, this hasn't been discussed once, and discussed by several who were pissed off about the two meetings that the commission wasn't able to have over there. So, my question is, why are we dragging this on? There's a lot of things that's dragged on, the commission never voted to put the VA office over there.
I think if his stuff's already in there, I think that courtesy is to talk with him before we just.
He didn't talk with us before he moved it.
Well, he got the idea it was okay from someplace. So, just in doing, being respectful, I think it's only right.
Yeah, I mean, I agree, I mean, yeah, we.
Even if we move it, then that's fine.
Right. I mean, I think we all need to talk about big boys and girls, and see what you can, you know, work out for the best of everybody.
I ain't opposed to the room, John, I just said, just have a conversation with him.
Well, when this come up last time, he gave me a call, and he was pretty adamant that that room should be used. And I said.
Well, have a meeting next week, we'll have a building committee over here, we'll come over here and look at that, see what comes up. And I guess you want on the agenda next month, again?
Yeah.
The EMS rebid, that was just kind of a placeholder, because I wasn't sure what was going to happen after our meeting. But we do need to set an EMS committee meeting to go over the RFP that we want to put out to bring back to the county commission. So, of you guys that are on the EMS committee, do you think that we could either meet sometime in the last week of July, or the first week of August, to sit down and look at these RFPs and these contracts? What's better for everybody?
So, you want to take out the RFP next month? Is that the.
Well, I mean, we got to, we got to get it together without having to have another special hall meeting to vote on it. Is that going to give us enough time?
Did you say first or last week?
Either the last week of July or the first week of August.
First week of August, best.
Best for you, okay. What about you guys? You know, my dad retired.
The first weeks.
The first week.
Right, yeah.
What about, um.
We don't want to have a choice, but.
Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, fifth, sixth, or eighth?
Tuesday, preferably, I have to work Monday.
Okay, so let's do August 2nd, August 6th. What's going to be a good time?
Six thirty.
Six thirty?
Yeah.
Where's that meeting?
That meeting will be in, ready set?
Wings of Lakes should be.
August 1st.
We can even do six, probably.
Does that give you enough time to?
Shame, will that give you enough time if we do it at six instead of six thirty?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, we'll do sixteen, that'll get us out a little earlier. All right. Commissioner Brooks, tourism.
What was it saying?
Tourism numbers, fake news.
I don't know where to start on this, but I have asked Chris to make a report next week or something, ad hoc committee meeting, try to run down these numbers. What the issue is, you know, people in the county, the average person on the outside looking in, they look to us when these reports come out, and they're very well within their rights to do it. One of them had mentioned tourism brings twenty-nine million dollars a year. Polk County, I mean, that's, they're like, oh, I can't get my fault over this, what's the county commission doing that money? The fact is, that is not real money. Tourism does pussy skin, the main businesses, rafting industry, they do a great job of getting everybody in here they can, through their marketing, we appreciate the rafting industry. I'll be the first to admit, you know, we'd be up against the wall without the rafting industry. Now, as far as these numbers put out by the chamber, the twenty-nine million, that's ludicrous. And I would like for the committee to meet and see, you know, all I can come up with so far is a hundred and twenty thousand lodging tax, that's total, so the county just gets forty thousand of that. Wholesale beer tax, a hundred and eighty thousand a year, so we'll say fifty percent, or ninety-five thousand of that comes from tourism. I think that's a liberal number, but just say ninety-five thousand, so that's a hundred and thirty-five thousand. And yes, there's sales tax, but concerning to me is our sales tax collections, which I have a chart, are higher in February, and that's when tourism is zero than now or in July. And what's happened, go back to outfitters, they're doing their part, getting those people here, which we benefit greatly from the, what y'all pay us, the lodging tax, the wholesale beer tax. But for some reason, they're not actually spending money here once they get here. You know, we've got to figure out what's going on there, and I'd like to get to the bottom of that real number. And then also, you know, the people questioning it's in the community, when they say those numbers, and they're right to question. But the fake news part I got on here, there's an article claiming a banner that says one million people a year visit Sugarloaf Park. There's not been a million people been to that Sugarloaf Park since I was in kindergarten, and I've lived here my whole life. That would have to be two thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine people a day, three hundred sixty-five days a year, a million people. If that was the case, would I put a death field next to twenty, direct traffic, get them in out here? So, four reference, Saturday, July 6th, we was off work. So, boy works amazing, and I paid him, I was talking to him for ten hours. I took him up there at seven o'clock that morning, and picked him up at nine that night. Now, is he the best county in the world? Probably not. Can he probably get there in twenty either way? I'd say so. From seven A.M. to nine P.M. on Saturday, January 6th, probably the busiest day of the year, there was four hundred and twenty-two people went to Sugarloaf Park. The busiest day of the year, that was two thousand two hundred people short of what it had to be every day, three hundred sixty-five days a year. And my problem with it is, like I said, when people read these numbers, they're like, a million people. And put it in context, one million people a year is exactly what it means to nine-one-one Memorial on New York City, one million a year. Sugarloaf Park, I would say forty thousand, a high number. I think you said the other day, you went to see there on the prettiest day of the year, and it's what, three quarters?
Four.
Yeah. I mean, I know in Mexico, there aren't a bunch of people in the car, but I believe that's one seven hundred of them. Not just Mexico, anybody, but, that, these numbers, we got to get these real numbers figured out, because when the public sees them, we look like the bad guys, like we're not managing money. And this is not money to be managed, it's like, well, it's fake news. We got to, maybe the ad hoc committee meeting can meet, and meet with us. Ryan may become with us, either. Ryan's in the hole through his business, and we just ask some questions for you, you can help walk us through, and let's break it down and see what the real number is, and let the public know.
So, have you reached out to the guys who come up with these numbers, Brent, and say, why don't you come explain it to everybody?
Yes, I have, and when I did, when I called him out on it, he sent a letter at me.
No, it's a different.
He was wrong, the guy from State Tourism. For example, the ten percent sales tax he figured, seven hundred five percent of that goes straight to the state of Tennessee. We don't get a.
What is my saying, like, let them come and explain it to everybody, because they're, they're the ones that's going to keep getting the, putting the numbers out.
They are, but if they want to come, they're willing to, but when I talked to them on the phone, I acted like I was crazy.
One of them's no longer there, and there's a new guy that's took one guy's place that was going to.
Whatever he left for, I hope it wasn't to teach him math by somewhere.
Well, maybe he retired.
Well, maybe we need to have, like you did with the budget.
Well, no, I say do it in the commission meeting, and put it on there, and they don't just do a small presentation.
All right. But we got lots of questions. I say do a committee meeting before the meeting, like thirty minutes, because we'll have a lot of questions.
There's a lot of questions around.
How many a day at Sugarloaf Park?
To be one million a year, that'd be two thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine a day a year, right?
Two thousand?
Seven hundred and thirty-nine per day, three hundred sixty-five days a year.
Kelly, you may not measure that by car, and it's like three point two people per car that go.
Yeah, they use a formula.
So, it could be a whole lot more than actually it really is.
Could be more, could be less.
Could be less, could be a lot less.
For what, ma'am?
So.
It's not.
They put the things, it's just like when you're doing a study for Walmart on the track.
I guarantee you, it's not forty thousand, you, four hundred, I think, forty-two or forty-six people went down there on July 6th, that was a Saturday after the fourth, one of the busiest days you'll have all year.
I'm not saying that their numbers are right, I know me, I'm not saying either that.
It's just that formula.
I mean, if it was all just a few, I wouldn't be sitting here, but this is ludicrous. I mean, the only other person I know that throws numbers like this at, is my grandson. You could say, Justin, how many fish you catch? He'll say sixty-four ninety-one, one million nine. But the good part, he's four, and he gonna grow out up near. And I've never heard such numbers in my life.
So, do you want to try to see if that new guy can come before the next commissioning, and see if, that way you've got all their questions, and everybody's got all their stuff together?
Yeah, he's been coppery, or you think he'd care?
Oh, I don't know. You're going to call him, bro.
I've got, you got his contact info?
I've got an email.
We go to it soon.
Yeah, well.
What is the number of the meeting?
Well, it's ad hoc committee, will be used for anything, H O C, we've got one, everybody's on it.
Oh.
It's for stuff, it's not common. We meet on it, it just can't cover anything.
So, the fifteen.
And like I said, that's nothing to do with rafting, so we appreciate y'all the ones that are actually, what's it called, worthy salt. Y'all bringing up into this county to offset the services and make a profit for the county. But, I mean, but those numbers, which y'all didn't throw at, but I'm just saying, we owe, the public deserves truth, and, you know, when they can't get fault over fix, and then it's on the website.
Well, and here, and here's even, to me, is even a bigger issue. It's just, it, we get into this every single time that we need money. What's the first thing that rolls out of everybody's mouth, and everybody starts saying? Property tax has got to go up. That cannot keep being the answer. Too many people in Polk County is getting a free ride, that starts the issue, but I'm That starts the issue, but I'm not going to get into all that tonight because it's not on the agenda. But that starts the issue. And the rafting industry, which I'm, everything that Greg has said, I'm, I'm behind it a hundred and fifty percent. My only problem is, I want to know why we can't get sales tax on the tickets.
Sales tax or rafting tax?
Well, some kind of tax. I mean, any place I've ever been in this world for a recreation, I have paid sales tax.
It's a sample answer. It don't start with him.
I, I know that, but.
They rode the Oakwood River.
I know that, but, but somebody said that whenever something got kicked out and throwed around, that that made it maybe probable for sales tax to come back into play.
You're talking about the Oakwood Whitewater exemption act done by the state of Tennessee that removed the sales tax from the Oakwood River? That's the one you're talking about?
Right. And so it's not been, and I'm not saying it can be. Don't, don't nobody get me wrong here, because I don't know. But I'm just saying that no business is any better than another business to charge sales tax. I, I don't get that. I mean, and it's nothing to do, it's not going to knock the rafters. When you walk up to a wind and they say it's seventy-five dollars plus tax, you don't turn around and leave. You don't do it, you pay it. Because if you can't pay that seventy-five, you're not there to start with. So it don't come out of their pocket, a rafter's company's pocket. It comes out of the person buying the ticket. And, you know, and I mean, I would have loved to have sold used cars for fifteen years and said, oh, that's tax-free. I would have sold, you know, several more, but then all in the same breath, it still, when people would sit down to do paperwork, they'd say, now, how much is the tax? You expect to pay tax, and it blows me away.
What makes this a great nation?
Yes, I mean, unfortunately, you expect to pay tax. Now, do we all want to? No, but, you know. But our main resource is not doing everything that it can do for us. And that's not being mean or ill towards any rafting company. It ain't coming out of our pocket.
Thousand percent truthful. I'm with you a million percent.
Yeah, I mean, you know, so anyway, I think it's something that we need to check back into.
I think Zavwam did that, and it was a public waterway, and it can't be changed because it's federal.
It's an available waterway.
Yeah.
You can't impose that.
It can't be changed because it's federal.
I thought it was something about though, that if it, if you didn't charge the rafting tax, that maybe a sales tax could be applied.
You've got the Federal Maritime Act, and then you've got the Tennessee Act that done away with sales tax because it was double taxation.
Right.
That is the Oakwood Whitewater exemption tax.
Yeah.
One deals with sales tax, the other deals with being able to charge a rafting tax.
Yeah.
You've got two different issues you're talking about. You have to bring them back in and look at them together.
But I think it needs to be looked back into. I mean, I'm just saying, it, I mean, I get it, if the, you know, the law is the law, we can't. I mean, we should be able to change that. We should be able to ask our representatives and this and that one. There should be somebody that would get behind us, first off, to make this a non-navigable river, that we all know that it is. Anybody that can go to kindergarten.
It's not.
Yeah, but it's not a not, a navigable river. Yeah. I mean, so I don't get that anyway, which, you know, I don't think anybody ever got that, but it, it is what it is. But I don't understand why, that nobody is willing to help us try to change that arrangement. You know, because it's not going to hurt anybody. All it's going to do is get us money that we well deserve for ambulance, police, emergency details, all of that stuff. And, you know, but anyway, I think we need to at least open the door and check into it, see where we're at with it, and, okay. If it don't, if you can't, you can't.
Did our services help during the race in the mountains? Police, fire rescue, anything?
No, Brother County did it all.
Okay, so there was no Polk County deputies in the.
No, that's untrue, that's untrue.
The deputies, maybe.
The deputies were hired, the Polk County Sheriff's Office was hired by the race company.
Oh, the deputy deputies, right?
They had, uh, they had six of them, they paid for six deputies.
Okay, to drive county cars or they drive a person car?
County cars.
Cool.
We just don't have enough fire trucks and ambulances for what they wanted.
Okay. All right, wait, it's, we'll have to discuss that later.
I want, I agree with her both, I mean, with you.
Yeah.
And I don't blame deputies, they all work and making that extra money. But, uh, I don't agree with us using our county vehicles, we're paying insurance, because, look here. If they'd got out there during that race, and, you know, y'all, even if y'all got hit, it wasn't your fault, somebody got hurt, one of the first people to listen is going to be Polk County.
You're talking about county gas too?
They were.
You're talking about county gas too?
County gas.
Now, I don't blame y'all for taking the money.
Well, it's not the wrong. Yeah, yeah.
But they may have had interest to cover that. But, well, there's special interests that they get for events, but then that, that just brings a, a bigger picture and opens the door to other things, because there's people that have county cars that drive them home, and they could easily.
All the deputies driving home.
Well, I'm not talking about the sheriff's department, I'm talking about, I mean, you got a property assessor vehicle, it could be hit.
But that's part of his day-to-day, at least.
But in most cases.
But this is not.
But in most cases, when they drive them home, they have to start being charged fringe benefits. So, and that's where it puts.
Part of their income.
Yes.
Yeah.
So when you start picking one part, you're going to have to pick everybody.
Well, what I'm saying though, and I agree with what you said, but like a property assessor or anybody else in the county drives one home, that's what I would say is part of their day-to-day anyway, this was above and beyond.
But I've seen that vehicle, he ain't working on weekends, so I've seen that drop.
Oh, I ain't talking about.
Not anytime soon, I'm just saying.
Back to the sheriff's department, come in, if they're driving a county car, and they're burning county gas. And that's correct that the deputies getting an extra little money, I ain't got an issue with that. But we're supplying that as a county for that race bunch that's paying them, but water's iron money.
Well, we should be getting two million, I think. I bet it's almost counting two million dollars.
I was asking if we got the two million.
We got that, yeah, true.
I'm still waiting.
Find your scratch.
Hey, Brooks. You said a million, million people visited Polk.
Sugarloaf Park.
You know, that's, uh, Neyland Stadium only hits about seven-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand a year, and you're saying there's a million.
Yes, that is equivalent of ten home games that you take. You take everybody's, the ten home games, that's what they're claiming comes to Sugarloaf Park in a year. That's what I'm saying. There's thirty people driving traffic up there and leaving. If there was three thousand people a day coming to Sugar, or five hundred, we'd have to put a deputy, you might go time that, Sean, wear an exit win. Directing traffic. Yeah, it'd be a solid line of cars, people coming and going to Sugarloaf Park. And that's three hundred and sixty-five days a year. I go up there every day in the winter, either fishing or making sure nobody's messing with the deal. I, and very seldom, you might see four people down there, might be every couple walking their dog or something, and that's it. You know, it's, I'd say forty thousand a year is a high number, it's off by nine-hundred-and-sixty thousand.
All right, Mr. Hector, let's do this surplus before we get into a, uh, yes.
Yes, ma'am. This comes out of the assessor properties office, there's one front office counter wood, there's one mapping desk in an L-shaped cherry wood, and there's another that was removed from trustee's office, it's a metal drawer. They never use these, not fixable, lost or scrapped from previous rent, it's scrapped over from other renovations from the floor of the streets. And the resolution will be seven, is it right?
You said they don't use mapping desks?
This that they have right here, this mapping desk, it's an L-shaped out of cherry wood, this mapping desk. Whereas the following listed property says the build, its intended usage and longevity in the service of the county of Polk and its continued usage has become suspect to the expected outcome with such properties being included as everything exhibited in page one. Now therefore be resolved with the county commission meeting in regular session on this the eighteenth day of July, twenty-twenty-four and pursuant to TCA code five dash fourteen dash one oh eight, one and two, and any other laws of the state of Tennessee. County executive is hereby authorized to sell or disperse of in part or whole the following properties, which are hereby deemed to be unusable and/or surplus by the Polk County Commission, with such being made in illegal sale or discharge qualified under chapter five of the Tennessee Code annotated or any other applicable law and allowance of the state of Tennessee for disbursement and surplus, damage, or unusable property. This resolution shall become effective on the passage of the public welfare program.
Motion to approve resolution seven one.
Saica.
Any discussion? Roll call. Keith Parker?
Yes.
Shane Bowman?
Yes.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Danny Carver?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Matt Shaggers?
Yes.
Chrissy Harden?
Yes.
Kelly Morgan?
Yes.
John Pippinger?
Yes.
Matthew Trump?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Hector, any concrete bid there?
Yeah, there was only one bid submitted for the concrete, concrete repair at the fornered upside. If you're unaware of it, there's six bolts that actually hold the compactor box down on each and every one of our compactors. Currently, there's only two holding the fornered box down, that's because there is a large crater sized shape hole, hole pad, is that about right, Danny? Huge, big, and so whatever this box is getting backed into, it has broken two of the bolts off the top. And so we need to replace this concrete pad, Danny and I went and looked at it. Danny helped right up everything on the specs. Um, we looked at putting a three-quarter inch steel plate on this, just to help the wear and tear of all the concrete. But with it also being the fornered side, it usually averages two poles a month. Every other month, you'll have three poles a month that comes out of it. So there's not quite as many poles as somewhere like Benton or South Oak or Gracie Creek. Uh, but materials and labor with the steel plates is twenty-three thousand eight hundred dollars. Without the steel plate, it's seventeen thousand and four hundred dollars.
How big an area is this?
This is a fourteen by, was it fourteen by fifty, Danny, do you have it?
I do, bring it with me.
I think it's a fourteen by fifty, and that is dug down to put a four-inch gravel base, six-inch concrete on top with wire and fiber, just like what we have been putting in every time the county goes back and fixes it.
And some drainage.
And some drainage on the site itself.
The entire side will have, it'll be gravel, and then drainage put in to try to avoid any further irrigation.
You recommend the steel, steel plate?
It would be a good thing, but, you know, with the volume, that was concrete, you know, for the cost savings will be sufficient. It'll all last, you know, twenty years.
I was going to say, how long do you think it would last? Do you think it'll hold the gun?
Yeah, because, you know, we're going with the high-pressure concrete, so that'll heal, which I'm thinking part of what is up there now is not high-pressure.
That was going to be my thing, if it's going, if we're going to turn around in a couple of years, be back up where we're, we started.
When was that pad poured?
It did four years ago, and that's also a four-inch pad with no gravel base, and we're putting a six-inch pad with a four-inch gravel base.
So you think that's.
Wire and fiber.
I think for this side, it'll be okay without the steel plate, but now it's, you know, like, big bit, this one for Gracie Creek, it's got more volume.
It's got more volume, don't you think?
I think they could last longer with the plating and, uh, because we're looking, we're going to have to look sometime soon to do those things, because it's concrete, it's hard for those, I don't know how those guys get this, uh, can put back in place, but they may.
So where are you ranking?
It's not just.
What?
It's not just the concrete pad, you know, because it's the tire out, the preparation for the bed, and then the reinstallation of the equipment, and the lock work is all included in this bit. It's not just.
It's not just that it's.
Not just a concrete pad.
So do you reckon, is, is that what you recommend?
I would recommend without the plating, and possibly if we see, you know, uh, a faster rate of, uh, degrading in the concrete, we might could go back before it gets too bad, instead of plating on top of it. But, you know, with all the issues we're faced with, and maybe coming up here soon, I think that we need to save a little bit.
Is the South Oak project complete?
No, no, the South Oak project is not complete.
Get a little bit down and start cutting, man, huh?
What are you on, Dylan?
Freezing hog. I screwed it too, too.
Yeah, I've tried to talk to, I know this is all subject here, but I've tried to talk to him, I've not got a response. But, uh, I'm going to try him again, and by next month, we'll make a decision.
You'll have an update?
Well, we're making the determination on what to do.
Maybe that building grounds committee meeting, a lot of the same people, some sanitation committee.
Yeah.
Maybe you come there and talk to us about, before we make, if you got that general bill committee too.
It'd be great if, if we could get him to do it with that bid, because if it goes back out for bid, uh.
Going who?
Yeah, we're going who, costly, and, and like I say, you know, we got this ambulance.
Yeah, there ain't legal, he's young and old about having a completed job if you get to beat him.
Not unless you put it on the, the, the original RFP.
All you can do then is take back money. I mean, you can't force him to do it. I don't think you could actually force him to do this job, or he could do this.
But he's got to tell us something, because it's been held.
Yeah, it's four years, September.
I was fixing to say, I think there's a stipulation, it does say one year, as a general.
Yeah, you'd have to go back and read the, what's on.
It's in the state.
But I'm going to try and get hold of him. You'll give him the chance, everybody says he's a good guy.
Oh, he does good work too.
He does good work. Which one y'all ladies paid, you're wrong.
The other big, the other big. The other big job.
He's way.
So do we need to run one more? I don't know this.
I'll make a point as we move over here.
Yeah, which one you're doing?
Which one you doing?
Concrete.
It's concrete.
What, Danny, right there?
Without the plate.
Without the plate.
Concrete, without the plate.
Roll call. Keith Parker?
Yes.
Shane Bowman?
Yes.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Danny Carver?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Matt Shaggers?
Yes.
Chrissy Harden?
Yes.
Kelly Morgan?
Yes.
John Pippinger?
Yes.
Matthew Trump? All right, number one.
We're taking an application for a board of the nine-one-one board. Um, we've got two vacancies. One was vacated as of this morning, I was notified, so there will actually be two vacancies filled on the nine-one-one.
Who are they?
The vacancies are for Steve Loftie and Mike Worthy.
Mike?
And then there'll also be a bunch of reappointments coming up, because even though those reappointments were done just a couple of months ago, they were due to serve out the term, and those terms have expired. But the way the code's written, they'll remain on there unless they're re, unless they are released. So there was, there's nothing going on on those boards that affect any.
Well, heard, heard.
With announcements and statements, I just wanted to make you all aware that we just finished a fifty-six hours worth of EMR training for ten of the guys in Copper Hill. So, once they go fast, hopefully by the end of August, we should have ten person sponsors that can work alongside the MOCs up there helping, um, try to uphold some of that, to help drastically.
Anybody else have any announcements?
I've got a question real quick, and it does, Oakwood Fire Hall, they sat down there, what, uh, what, where's its statement?
Oakwood Fire Hall? Where's its man?
It's vanished, we're waiting on the get fire term, now where's that at, Rob?
Final inspection, we still have not got the electrician to come out and put the final inspection, it's a dear girl. Uh, V E C's been notified, a deputy deck to get the safety tank permits, uh, got all that proved, but for whatever reason.
So who needs to move next, V E C is electrician.
V E C's waiting on electrician.
Who's the electrician?
I've got his number, what I need to tell him to do.
Need to get your final inspection done, so we can.
Do his job.
Who is he?
Who what?
Who is he?
I don't remember, I got his number in my phone, but that's district sensitive, y'all, don't you preach that morning, buddy? You put ten things on there, not about the building, but maybe the sanitation committee.
I'm on sanitation committee, Brooks. And the, the building committee thing, the V A office affects his commission.
Well, I did it, you'll do it, so, I, I'll get ahold of.
So is that by, uh, by association building?
But it's building grounds, though.
It is.
You could have called first, but anyway, I will get ahold of him tomorrow. He thought he was supposed to hear the V E C last time, you might, they mean you talked to him, and he thought V E C was going to call him, but.
V E C don't line up your inspection.
That's the only thing that is waxed on that, and then the meter will be ready to go in.
So he'll get in, and, uh, it'll be in week.
Hey, what'd you find out about the hole in the lawn?
Anybody?
Had a hole in the lawn?
John Holt said we couldn't.
Or we couldn't?
Yeah.
Do, have you?
It had to be engineered, and it would go with the warranty, but we needed it. Engineer looked at it.
I mean, we got what, two-hundred and fifty? Was it two-hundred-and-forty thousand in the fund balance? Give or take.
I don't know what that.
I mean, that's what I seen in June, so I'm not sure what July looks like.
We still have to get that.
I'd say if it's seventeen, just take it out.
We didn't, were you hoping that if you were to pull out a maintenance or something, if you wanted to do the general.
Well, what, did you get ahold of the company itself, or did somebody talk to them?
No, that was John Holt.
I would do it out of sanitation.
There's two different things, the other one y'all approved back in May, by forty thousand.
Yeah.
The what?
There was a forty thousand bid y'all approved in May.
That was for the Benton dump site and everything that was done there as well. So we didn't need to find out where y'all, funds, water camp, where you had one of those.
I found out from someone in the special.
A little from the special, I found out.
I just did find out.
Y'all want fund balance?
So that's what I hooked in. There's a, there's a basement, couldn't.
Do it, you all, we don't, has anybody? Yes, ma'am.
It's on each side of the door, it's a big short rack, there's one on.
I'm going to call it, Kevin, yes.
So, uh, my name's Tiffy Stevens, I was here at the March meeting, and I inquired about station two, and I was told then that the only thing that black is two hours gets your work. And so it seems like nothing has happened much since then, and now I know that it's still not finished, why was I told that? I was assured by you that that's all that was black.
Well, I do apologize, I mean, I'm sorry. Well, I do apologize, I mean, I'm sorry.
But you know, because you don't just want, that's not, that's not the truth to just make it's all of Polk County and especially like O'Koy, which is where all of our industry and our tourism is, because we don't, we put all our eggs in that basket, it's very, very volatile.
And I thought then.
To ask that and I didn't, I didn't drive away from Springtown, to be told that it's true. I just wanted to know where the wires got crossed because it's about the same size, it wasn't.
I'll explain it to you. The meter box was set and I was wrong, I admitted, I thought the meter was in it. It wasn't. I got a hold of Robbie, he called VEC and all they got to do is come out and inspect. The inside is done, then we got held up on a safety, pardon me.
Because VEC would not put that meter in.
The parking lot needs to be graded and.
Right, the safety tanks in the parking lot, okay? It took forever for the state to find, uh, where there's a safety tank there, it was mapped out years ago. And I admit, I didn't know that would be coming up either. You know, I didn't mean to mislead you, but the safety.
And you can just tell me a lot, if it wasn't done, I just want to be told that that's all it lacked.
No, I mean.
I just, I could buy that not until it would.
What I told you was incorrect, but I didn't do it on purpose. I seen the meter box and I didn't know the meter wasn't in it. So working out with that trick. And then the biggie was that safety tank. It'd been put in years ago when it's a rear tanned building. And you've got to have a map of where the safety tank is before VEC will turn your power on. You got to prove you got a safety system. So they took how long, Robbie? Two months?
Yes, sir, I, I.
He's got it right here.
Yep, so I was just looking at it and it was, I can't get it down low, but May sixteenth was whenever we finally got the confirmation back from Janet Conyer. I messaged Janet on May the seventh or eighth, depends on how you look at eleven forty-five, twelve o'clock. And then she finally sent everything back on May the twenty-seventh. Once they finally got it dug out. Now, I'll try to get pulled up to see what year that that actually was, Greg, or for whatever reason, I can't pull it here.
There used to be a rear tanned building, it swapped, the tornado blew away. And I got a safety system, but we didn't know where the tank was. So the state had to find it on our map. But yes, I did tell you wrong, I didn't mean to. I just seen the meter base on the side of the building from the highway and I thought it was done. And then like, I guess a week later, ten days, I found out there wasn't the actual meter inside the meter base, so.
Also after the meeting, if there wasn't, we've already seen afterwards and.
I, he might have knew I did. I just thought it was all done when I seen the meter box outside. I didn't know the actual meter hadn't been put in. But we did buy two trucks from Radecan and it's one of them going there.
One of those goes.
One of those is going out.
So are we going to have to put like an open house petition in the paper?
I'd say so.
I wouldn't think so until we got all that.
I wouldn't.
I wouldn't until.
Well, the new truck.
Twenty-sixth, we lost it, it's been lost ten years.
Yep. Now, the first several years of that.
It wasn't the counties.
It wasn't the counties, that was out of our control.
I mean, I guess you're still giving us a for you, we all, we did put all of our eggs in the rafting basket, that's a very volatile one. That's, that's our heartbeat right there.
I agree.
You think they would be sooner than eight years? We have something.
Well, they were, well, there's a lot to it that didn't concern this commission, a whole lot, but, but yes, we are. And I did, I apologize, I admit, I told you wrong that night, but it was not intentional. I just seen the meter box out there and I know the wiring was done and the, the bid went, go included the wiring and everything was done.
So as of now, we do not have a projected date that it'll be ready for service?
I'd say, I mean, I would say in a month we get on it, but I'm not saying that.
I think we're on VEC's time, right?
We got to wait on VEC.
Until, until that final inspection certificate gets put on to it.
So we can't really control when that's going to happen. When the electric company comes out and inspects it, that's when we'll have it.
And sometimes there's inspectors.
You'll call the electrician tomorrow, right? It's under VEC, so with VEC. The electrician official, VEC can inspect, so he's got, there's a call tomorrow.
Yeah, he got a rough end inspection and it pays, and they done all the woodwork stuff. And now he's got to call VEC.
Final inspection.
And get it to final inspection.
So we're on VEC's time.
Yeah, and, uh, and here again, I'm not making excuses, but when me and Robbie talked to him like two weeks ago,
So whatever the electrician is not busy.
And I apologize, but I, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't on purpose about the electrician. I just seen it from the highway and, uh. Yeah, that's another thing.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's really not up to us, it's that state inspector.
It's the state inspector, it's all up to him. VEC doesn't have anything to do with it.
You said that you were going to call the electrician here tomorrow morning?
We talked to him about two weeks ago and I thought it was took care of then. Now, when he does get a hold of inspector, Taylor did.
When he gets a hold of the inspector, you start praying, because you are at his mercy.
Polk County's not real high up on his.
And, no, we're not.
I've had people call me.
It, it took me a month to get a pole inspected, to put a meter on, to run a well for the cows.
I've had people call me that said.
From the time I put it in.
Cost them like eight hundred interest on the construction loan.
Yeah.
Because they put clothes on it, you know, get their mortgage, because he held them up.
And I don't know, I mean, I'm not downing the man, he may be that busy, but I'm telling you, you're at his mercy.
Somebody said the state kept back on the number of them. And he's trying to cover like Polk and Bradley.
He's, at this guy, when he finally made it out to my place, he said he's covering four counties.
That's the way the safety tank people act.
Yeah. And she is, I won't say it, but that lady is, she thinks she's God.
Yeah.
And she will come whenever she gets good rent and not a day before.
We got Ryan to say one thing before we're out of here.
You know.
No, you're good, okay. All right, do I hear a motion?
One, two things. Fire hall related, if anybody wants a chance on a raffle for the Lindell Community Center, that's my home box, uh, Debbie and I, we both know, but it's a raffle for a full bee, or, oh, I'm sorry, raffle for two halfbees and a freezer, come see me. John, when we have them fair.
This is gonna be, uh, August twentieth through twenty-fourth.
Thank you.
Uh, I believe it's the dates, I'll have to double check, I mean, I've, I've heard of them. I've heard of them. And having a family fun day at the bar on Saturday. The rest of the day, your family, it'll be the twenty-seventh, the next day. Free bounce room slides, petting zoo, free hot dogs. All that. Six, uh, twelve-six.
The man who won't go, I mean, whatever.
Yes, and whatever, whatever commissioner wants to host that, I'll be glad to come up and name absolutely.
Motion to adjourn? Motion. Second. Amen. Amen.